Great. Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Craig Borba.
Present.
Juanita Garner.
Here.
Al Jones.
Here.
David Norgard.
Here.
Deborah Schwartz.
Here. All present.
Okay, I can have a motion to accept the agenda for tonight.
I'm moved.
Second.
Have a personal second. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Let's go to room number three. Public comments this time has been set aside for members of the public to address the library board trustees on agenda items and items of the general interest within the subject matter within the jurisdiction of the city. Although this library board trustees value your comments. Pursuant to the Brown Act is generally cannot take any action on any items not listed on the agenda. You have three minutes to speak. Do you have anybody interested in speaking? Please come forward.
Down here?
Yes.
Thank you.
You can introduce yourself, please, and your address.
And turn on the microphone.
A little button now.
There you go.
Thank you. My name is Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Rancho Mirage. I just wanted to do a thing. I mean, we need to monitor this evening, but I wanted to add some comments more or less as housekeeping. On your on your protocols, I guess, and how you conduct a meeting. I am concerned because there is a sign up sheet and I would prefer individual speaker cards because of man and for people's own protection. And and just to have it out there like that, that's and that goes into another area of the agenda too, that the minutes that I noticed, I've been reviewing minutes today and and I noticed you have a column for participants at the meeting. And I'm sure a lot of people probably would have liked that to be named on an agenda that maybe they are monitoring. And not that that's an issue, but it could be. It is for me. So that's something you probably shouldn't do, and that's probably because of the signup sheet, but that's speculation on my part. And odds and ends, I was over the library today. I haven't been there for over twenty years. And I know you have some issues going on or you're gonna do some construction. And and I was alarmed, I guess, not alarmed, but they did have the agenda there either. And I would think you would want to post that there to have it available for the participants of the library to review. I know it's online, but and even this this agenda says it's a courtesy to have it on the library. It really is a courtesy. It's required by law to have it on your website. And and I guess sign in sheet. Trustee comment, future agenda. I noticed there was a speaker interested in having agenda items and I don't know if he really understands the process to do that. So maybe, and I can't find anything on the city by law viewer. So maybe consider adopting an agenda setting policy or protocol. Would be something that would be unique with this board to do. And also even the agenda item public comment, it's mixed in with agenda items. And and you're running three minutes for everything on this meeting agenda, which is unreasonable, I think. And that's all I have. I think that's it. And I'm just gonna sit back and enjoy the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Okay, speakers. There's nobody on the line that wishes to speak. Okay. All right, we'll go to room number four, cause same agenda. Have a motion, please.
I'm moved.
And I'm second.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll do administrative reports from number five. Friends of the library, is Nancy Morrison here?
No, I don't see. I don't see Nancy. I don't think we have anybody to give a report for them.
Deborah, you were at their last meeting.
I was. It was I'm trying to think. I actually, I don't think there was anything except they did talk about all of the events and they were very successful. They raised a lot of money, especially the the auction. They've got one coming up, several coming up, which I think Julie will be handling as far as the press releases and so on, but also their financial situation is pretty good. Other than that, there was no major events or discussion about anything of note.
I think they have a a modernism event.
They do have a modernism event in February, and then they have another one in April at the Flannery Exchange. And I think there's another one coming up as well, but I don't have their schedule.
All right, we'll get that information out.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
No, I think they're doing quite well.
All right, thank you. Palm Springs Library Foundation. Please.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Just three, three things to discuss or report on today. One, the awareness campaign, and thank you once again for the grant that you gave us in the last, last month's meeting. We appreciate it. We're putting the money to work already. The, the first order of business is the website. Because creating the awareness and action oriented plan would be to drive people to a place where they could learn more and then donate. So we're using a technology called Stripe on the website, which is great because it's electronic based and people give your, their credit card and the money goes directly into our bank account. So it's a very efficient methodology for us being a little bit lean on our staffing. And then we expect that we're gonna get a macro view of the entire plan. I'm not exactly sure when that's gonna be because of the holidays and so forth, but we expect that to be the other, actually the second step, I suppose, after this, the web orientation. So we'll maybe have more to share with you. And possibly Al, if you're able to attend the meeting next Thursday, there might be some more detail.
I'll be there. Yeah, I'm gonna be there.
Okay. Second point is our annual drive. We, we kicked that off. And did something a little different. We usually sent letters out. We, this year we sent emails and letters. We did not give people the opportunity to send paper back, so we saved a little bit of money that way. And so we drove all, all of the donations to the Stripe system on the website. Happy to say that we're running ahead of the previous years. And I don't have a final tally quite yet, but we will have that shortly, but we are, we are ahead of where we were on that drive. And then direction wise, the next big step, other than implementing the awareness campaign, is getting us some executive help, some executive leadership help, primarily in fundraising area. So we've got a lot of things in motion. We did post the position on Indeed on that website. We've got a couple of other things in motion that we should be able to tell you a little bit more about in the coming weeks. So those are the, the three things that we've been working on. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Thanks much.
Excellent. Appreciate it. Library staff report.
Yeah. All right. So for Palm Springs Speaks, we have three exciting events coming up. We have Fran Drescher on January twenty fifth, Terry McMillan on February twenty seventh, and Billy D. Williams on March seventh. Tickets are available now, so go to palm springspeaks.org for more details and to purchase tickets. The library, the main library will be closed on January fifteenth for Martin Luther King Junior Day. Wellwood will be open that day. We have an adult Makerspace Open House coming up on January seventeenth at six P M. It's just a chance for adults to come and play with some of our Makerspace items. So we have robots, a three D printer, iPads, a cricket, so just different things that the adults will be able to play with it. Right now, we do all of our programming with teens with it, so it's just a chance to experience new technology for adults. And then we have Drag Queen Story Hour, Returns with Bella De Ball on January thirtieth at six P M. All are welcome to that program. And then we have a lecture on January thirty first, thirty first at six P M. It is titled Modernism One O One: Everything You Wanted to Know About Modernism, But Were Afraid to Ask. So that is free and open to the public. And that's all.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks. Thanks again for your report. Appreciate it. Room number six, Director's Report.
Right. We've got absolutely find it there in a minute.
Oh, yeah, your mic is on.
Let me switch it about that. Okay, there you go. On your page, the summary that we always look at. It's eight eight. But it shows the balance sheet for twenty four twenty five. There's really very little change. It went from one point eight oh one million to one point seven nine eight. There was really only one change, and that was the fair market value. I just remembered I promised to give and I did not. My apologies because the holidays interrupted. Oh, okay. I will have that at the next meeting. That was the return on the city's return. So my apologies. Anyway, so no major changes at all in the
Okay, are there questions for Al Jones regarding regarding your report? I have a motion to accept.
I'm moved.
First.
I'm second.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Presentation by group four, architecture. Who's going to
Let me just get them pulled up.
Lisa, is that, am I visible now?
Yes, let me just see.
And Kristoff mentioned. Also, if you could have him join. You guys ready for us? I can, let me go to start sharing screen and see if that works. But you still have to enable me to share screen there. Still disabled. When you're on mute, if you're giving me instructions.
All right, just one second. I'm trying to find it. Dina, do you see it at all?
The shares.
Okay, it's working for me now. Great. Let's see. And can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry for the, I'm at home right now. It's it was called from home and just to introduce myself, I'm David Schneig, Principal in Charge from Group Four, and with me is our, one of our very talented architects and project co-leads on this is Kristoff Mancher, and we will just jump right into our presentation. Okay, so we've been asked to give a twenty minute presentation. We can do it shorter or longer. This is sort of our, our speed, but still in-depth versions of it. I want to just first of all, thank the Chair Borba and Trustee Norgard for your participation thus far in this effort. And we'll start with just introducing me and the rest of the team. So there are four Group Four key members, myself and Kristoff, and Andrew Gifford and Jonathan Hartman are both still on their holiday breaks like you are City Librarian, and we have a very talented team of engineers and cost consultants and technologists here. So some of these people you may be familiar with. Just as a little quick introduction against, again, for who Group Four is. We've, we're nearing our fiftieth year in practice, almost exclusively public architecture and public libraries have been one of our main areas of specialty with over four hundred libraries planned or designed to date. The, some of you, I don't know if any of you remember when back in twenty thirteen, we were working with you on the visioning plan and most of all, in addition to loving, getting to know Palm Springs better and Palm Springs Library, getting to work with your community and you guys are a special community with a special library. We've worked on other historic libraries and won awards for them, including adding event centers such as this one in Palo Alto's from Kenada. We've recently done a library and cultural arts center in New York, Linda, California, which are just wonderful examples of projects. And also when we talked about taking existing buildings and transforming them, why would anybody show this picture of an old Hy-Vee supermarket? It shows that you can take something and transform it into this national award-winning library that also is an innovative interior. So these are just a teeny bit about what our team is and what we bring to the table, but let's stop talking about us and talking about you and give you a project overview. So for those who have listened in this, a lot of, and participated previously, this presentation should provide some simplicity because things are coming together really nicely. And so we have three main project components that we're working on, and our initial project scope had a series of different funded and unfunded pieces, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, but it really breaks down simply into the main library, the J C Frye Building and the possible event center. Those were the main tasks, and we've shown more complicated schedules before. It really is quite simply, we've completed our, are about to complete with our presentation to council next week, the schematic design phase, and then moving through work into getting the grant-funded work completed by March twenty twenty six and other non-funded work continued beyond that. So all these public works projects do take time, but they are worth waiting for. So we're gonna, in the agenda, talk about each of the three components separately. We begin with, of course, the one with greatest amount of focus and effort is the main library. And so our goals are to really give a full renewal to the building. We love your library. We've heard that lots, we love the architecture of your library as well. We love the services. We love its role in the community, but we want to seamlessly update and modernize it to support twenty first century library services. Twenty first century library in your community remains and will be a beacon for the whole community and will be a cultural anchor and partner, theme you'll hear in some of our community input. It's about being inviting and welcoming to all. It's recognizing our past, responding to your year-round and your seasonal residence and being a centerpiece and a better centerpiece to its context in Sunrise Park. So we start back in the history. William Cody designed this building in nineteen seventy five. And what's changed since nineteen seventy five? I joke that you could use the building as a TV and movie set if you wanted to, because it's almost cast in amber. There, you'd have to do very little to make it a period piece. And of course, a ton has changed in those years. And so the building infrastructure that the building is past its intended useful life in this meeting of full building renewal. And so all of these building systems require major upgrades. Some graphic illustrations of this are how we're looking to upgrade our structural systems. The building codes back in seventy five were different. There are issues with the high ceiling here and foundations and how the walls are attached that need to be upgraded. The exterior, we sort of look at and take it for granted, it sort of fits in the desert brutalist modern building, sort of looks good, but if you get up to it closely, you'll see a lot of the concrete is cracked and falling and is in need of significant repair and finishing as well. The restrooms need to be completely replaced, including the fundamental utility infrastructure to the building as it's corroded and is problematic for it as well. The, there's hazmat materials we've been assessed too, and so as we're doing this work, we'll be doing a payment for that too. So, okay, so what has changed since nineteen seventy five? Who remembers these old technologies and the, of course, the, our whole way of life has significantly changed. The role of libraries has changed, but has remained just as important, I think, maybe ten, fifteen years ago, when some of these technologies came up, people wondered would they replace the library and library usage, notwithstanding the what is believed to be still a blip that we're recovering from, from COVID, remains a vital place for lifelong learning and community gathering. And so this is something that the trustees are evangelists about and know, and we concur, applaud your leadership on that. And so we asked your community, your community members have a high level of interest in the library. We asked residents and tourists alike, we kept track of their comments by color coding. We had an online survey, had a pop-up kiosk, had a community open house, and thank you for those who participated in the steering committee, trustees, foundation members, friends, staff members, and over a thousand people participated in a very focused time, so I think that's really superb. We asked people, the, we said there are certain prerequisites about, of course, the collections and children's, adult, teen programs, but we said, moving towards the forward into the future, what are the key aspects that you'd like the library to focus on? The library will have to some degree a little bit of all of this in there, but which areas should be the real centers of excellence? And what really has emerged from this are these were five themes of celebrating local culture and history, as Lisa presented some of the activities from desert modernism to celebrating the LGBTQAI communities, language learning and exchange from indigenous to Latino communities, arts and creativity, local display of local arts, and there's a strong desire of food and drink, and as Jeannie has described, it's the consistency with who Ford's experienced for a library of this size, that a cafe unfortunately can't be financially supported here, but we do recognize and report back what the community has said. So that translates into a building program. The program is, of course, a list of spaces and square footage, but more importantly, we describe it as a series of experiences, that the library is more than just books and chairs and computers, but it's what you want to do. You want to browse, which is how you discover things and get help from staff in terms of readers advisory suggestions. Children want to learn and play. You want to engage with local history. You want to meet and connect. You want to, as Lisa talked about, make and create. And when we talk about the event center, the performing and acting and interacting, there are all parts of those. So this is, we have a square footage program, but these are the main spaces and of course, staff spaces and we've been developing the schematic design phase, the reorganization of the building, where for those just listening in, building is an appropriate size for the community, but can use a significant rearrangement and updating for this here. And so excuse me. A children's area being proposed to be converted into a meeting room, a dedicated maker, create like craft space, teen area right as you come in, a teen maker space, adult areas flow throughout the browsing and adult areas, staff areas brought to where you're sitting today and taking the children's area over in the northwest corner. These are some earlier images we had shown, but just to sort of give it scale about what the with new seating and rearranged collections are, because the diagrams are hard to see, and this is an earlier image that will be updated in this next phase that shows how we're talking about creating four to six enclosed study rooms that can also serve for passport functions here and how we're celebrating. I forgot to say that one of the things that's so wonderful about the building is like you hear brutalist desert modern, but what really is is an oasis, so celebrating the high central space, we're going to be restoring and basically rehabilitating the Koi Pond in there. And ideas of having some combination of high stacks and flexible mobile stacks, so that you can do a variety of different programs. So a lot of wonderful potential to do these long-awaited and greatly needed interior service and infrastructure upgrades. So we're also looking at the outside as well. We're working with Rios Landscape Architects who did your recent and award-winning city park. They've done a good analysis that talks about how there has been periodic flooding to the north side of the building, how courtyards can be enhanced. They've done sun exposure and heat mapping as well, which of course, dealing with the outdoor spaces and being sensitive to them are important. The existing landscape is really from a different era of sod and extremely water thirsty, looking for opportunities to be more zero scape and water wise and going forward. We also are looking as part of our core main library upgrades to expand parking, which has been a long need for programs to the south. To the south of the library and possibly including an extra in-only or right turn exit out there as well. There have been discussions about trying to connect to other aspects, other Sunrise Park parking lots. At the moment, that's not in our present plan, but expanding the parking here is what is being proposed. So that is the main, that concludes the main library summary. And very quickly, we'll talk about the J C Frye Building, which the Frye Building will continue and have a new uses. It's an important and valuable asset to the city and to the library. Having the Friends book sale, there will be a Friends bookstore. I forgot to mention that in the planning diagram, our Friends workroom and office space, foundation office as well, and having overflow space for the library archive here is being proposed as well. The building needs fundamental infrastructure upgrades, gender neutral restrooms, HVAC, new entries, restore the windows, electrical service, repair the roof and comprehensive interior remodel. And similar to the main building from its era, there are some hazardous materials in there that we work in, that we need to update, and that will be part of the work. In this first phase of work, the schematic design phase, in parallel to that, we had a scoping phase to explore an event center for which very much is an exciting opportunity. The meeting room that you're in now is very limited in its size and functionality and quality. And there is a definite recognition in the library that celebrates arts and culture to have a much better events center, and this was, I think, really championed by the foundation. Here are examples of other Group Four library event centers. This one in Cairo County, Ohio, which shows a combination of a sloped floor and platform and stage of lighting, looking back towards the stage and having indoor-outdoor opportunities. Imagine looking out towards the mountains from this event center. center and of course uh all important is what goes on inside the building but uh in your uh in the uh high season, uh outdoor spaces and in the evening, they'll be able to go inside and out are uh key uh components of that. So we weren't really at the design phase, it was really at scoping, but we worked with Rios or landscape architect and we uh did uh develop a number of uh ideas, we did look at possible locations for an event uh uh center and it was really either north or south and north really uh was better from a whole variety of uh advantages and that would be confirmed uh uh when and if this uh moves uh forward, uh there was a lovely uh mandate to uh complement and contrast the existing um desert modern building with something that could be truly iconic, uh we presented a number of uh ideas uh of uh one of them that at least resonated at the first time with the project steering committee was something that uh might uh be something that's dramatic with uh very slight influence by slot canyons and it's enclosed space and functional that we have. So very exciting potential. So of course, a very big part of our project and uh nobody wants to finish with uh talking about how much a project costs, but that is uh critical, I want to start by saying this project has been long uh needed and long-awaited and funding has been uh what has been causing the uh time to pass and I want to really commend uh the city, the library, the trustees, the and others for uh uh applying for uh this state building, state library building Ford grants and uh getting over thirteen uh point four billion dollar uh uh grant to uh finally catalyze this uh uh project and uh that there are some preliminary commitments uh to Measure J uh here, that is a total current funding of about fifteen point two million uh rounded up uh the total project cost for the J.C. Frye Building and Main Library Building together are approximately forty million uh if anyone was thinking that the uh no one expected the uh grant to fund the entire project, uh it's really, as I said, a a catalyst uh for it and uh the it would be terribly disruptive to service to only replace that uh infrastructure and uh even that, I we spent a lot of time working with uh public works and the steering committee to understand how uh what you really, this is an opportunity of generations and that you really need to make the comprehensive investments uh now to bring the building up uh to the modern era and so there's a uh funding need of approximately uh twenty-five million in total for the main and the Frye uh build. And uh the event center uh is an important uh and exciting opportunity, the foundation has uh indicated a uh uh an excitement and uh confidence in being able to raise this money, uh this was just uh mentioned earlier, the uh hiring of uh a uh doing a a funding evaluation and getting additional staff uh for uh funding campaigns is uh great. Uh Group Four has been a a partner to uh communities all across uh the nation and we've helped communities raise over uh three billion dollars in new library uh funding of different types, so and foundations have been a key component of many of those uh efforts and so uh we uh really support that and uh will would love to uh continue to work with the foundation uh to uh uh help uh make this a reality, in general, this is being uh conceived as as a, because we're on the uh funding deadline uh for the grant uh that we need to uh be moving forward, I'll come back to our next steps uh here, but we're looking to uh have at the January eleventh uh city council uh action from then, there is a discussion about a possible uh funding strategy that is very exciting that uh we are of the uh preliminary understanding that uh if council were to act uh and uh choose this as the appropriate uh to follow the method that's going to be uh presented uh to them uh next week, that uh the work that we described uh should be able to be funded for the main and the Frye uh building, uh but because we have this uh grant funding deadlines uh here, the and the time it will take uh as as is natural for capital campaigns for the event uh center would follow separately, because it's a, the vision is a freestanding structure, uh we will make sure any of the work done in the first phase doesn't interfere uh with that and is that making it all work, so our next steps is will be uh uh we submitted our schematic design uh report and estimate uh before the end of last year, we'll be at council next uh uh week, it uh maybe next uh week in that session or it may take more, it's a significant uh council has a lot on their plate and uh we'll see whether it will get uh resolved in that meeting or whether we'll take a subsequent meeting or not uh but from that, then NTP has our notice to proceed, we'll be waiting to give the notice to proceed to then uh begin on that next uh go back to design or develop, so that is uh what we have for presentation uh for it, I think, I can see how close we were to my uh time, so I'm trying to figure out how to uh stop my sharing and I can open this up to uh questions um.
Uh David, thank you for that presentation, um questions from, yes.
It is, is that going to be the same presentation that you're going to make to the city council or is it going to be a slightly different presentation?
Uh this was our draft of that, so subject to staff input uh and a follow-up from uh uh Genie and Joel, uh that was uh intended to be something like that, yeah.
Again, thank you, David, for your presentation, uh it obviously gives us something to look forward to, that we have been looking forward to for quite a while but hopefully this will uh we'll be able to close the door on this a little bit ahead. I have a motion to accept their proposal and that we support it, so it goes to the city council, so moved. And first.
I'll thank you.
And I have a second. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
I wish. Again, thank you, David.
Thank you for your leadership and support and uh look forward to continuing to work with you as we move ahead.
Great, thank you. Oh, and David, before you leave, uh is there another meeting scheduled with the planning committee coming up?
The project steering committee, uh Christoph, have we scheduled uh that yet or?
It has not been scheduled yet.
So I think we're waiting for that notice to proceed with design development and then we'll uh lock in that uh design development phase, but we will be coming back to the steering committee at least once during the next phase.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we're.
Okay, well, we'll sign off now and uh thank you for your time.
All right, I can hear. Okay, uh request to receive the, or I need to be uh minimum eight uh to receive a donation of three thousand dollars for the purchase of library books. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Who's not gonna be saying none of that?
And uh let them know that we appreciate it, uh Chris donation, it's very nice.
There it is.
Okay, committee reports.
Al? Yes, I did it to Major J, um that was on December fourteenth, a morning via Zoom. Um I did not ask to speak, but I was there to actually ended up speaking as a matter of fact, but um they asked me to a couple of questions but I I was there to make sure just how the conversation was going to go and it was very interesting from the city manager standpoint what they will be doing at city council is look bond, issuing bonds for a lot of this to to do, not just for ours, but we were looking for additional money as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um and although it was allocated out, uh there was some and correct me, Bill, if I'm wrong, but I think they were suggesting we were going to repay it at some point um but I don't understand quite what that meant, but it could be through the bond issue, but I think what they're going to be looking at a lot and talking about next week is the how to finance it. And um uh Measure J did in fact come across with the money. Um they remained intact and that was, as you all know, has been my concern for some time um but until it's in our account, count and nothing, so, but it looks good, I I think it's going well. It's going pretty well.
And do they meet once a month?
They meet every month, right, so I'm on their gen- and not the agenda, but I'm on their meeting schedule now.
Right.
Uh and depending on the agenda, whether I'll ask to speak in that.
Thanks for attending the session, yeah. Any comments for or questions from Al?
Oh, Bill, please.
Hi, what I've read.
Yes, Al.
Is that the Measure J, there will be my Measure J funds used to pay for the municipal bond for uh the balance in the library and also uh for a couple of other projects.
Right.
That that's a city.
There are a couple of other projects.
Fire department.
So we'll be, we'll be eager to hear the clarification on that because potentially that frees up the foundation to go after the event center.
Oh, wow. Wow.
But
Yeah.
We'll hold our horses, right?
Yeah, because it it's been very clear, the budget is tighter than it has ever been before. The the problem is, a lot of money came in through the uh COVID money and that's no longer available to us and so a lot of it it's going to be interesting to see how they balance it out.
Hmm.
There's just, the the end of the COVID money is the twenty-five, I mean the June thirtieth to twenty-five and we don't have it for twenty-five, twenty-six, the city doesn't. So it's going to be very, very interesting to see what what occurs to offset the loss of that money. So anyway, the game's not over yet, but looking positive.
Yes, the games still are.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move to woman number nine, which is trustee staff comments and future agenda items. Any comments from trustees?
I just want to say how excited I am with the library, this is moving because it's so I mean, I brought my kids to the library and they were little and it's like, they're right about it, couldn't even say exactly the same, nothing has changed. And um but I have faith. Um it's also, I'm so happy that this is happening and I'm just thrilled, beyond thrilled.
And I'm genuinely impressed with the firm that uh was selected.
Their work is incredible. That supermarket they transformed, nothing short of amazing.
Okay, any other comments? Can we carry on, I will adjourn this meeting, it is now six thirteen, our next meeting is scheduled for
seven.
That'd be when we're set. Yeah.
You already what?
Seven, seven.
Seven.
And uh you guys can uh update us on that agenda regarding how.
Yes. I made yet another note.
All right, thank you all for attending.
We'll have a quick one.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.